I have 3:30 PM on Monday, January 24th. So unless there's any reason we shouldn't, I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. First, if I could, I'd like to just impose, Gabriel, do you think you could serve as our timekeeper again? You were acceptable at it in the last meeting. I'd appreciate if you'd do that for us again.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, so the roll call. For the Board of Education members, Judy? Lori?
Hi, Lori Blake, Commando.
Okay. Mike? Michael? Rowan?
Yep, Mike Sharon, Hebron.
Sue?
Sue Stoffey, Marlboro.
Thank you. Mary?
Mary Kuchewski, Marlboro.
Joe?
Joe Cluddy, Hebron.
Jessica? Carrie? Gabriel?
Gabriel Marks, Hebron.
Eric?
Eric Shetlandco, Andover.
Okay, and then Mike Morris from Hebron. And then Administration, Scott?
Scott Leslie, Acting Superintendent.
Penny?
Penny Bruce, Middle School Principal.
Michael?
Michael Cerusie, Middle School Principal.
Great, is Eva with us tonight?
Eva Gall, Business Manager.
Great, is there any other administrative folks that I'm missing?
We have our student representative. We have some folks online. If you introduce her?
I think so.
Kristin Small, Supervisor of People's Services.
And Christine, can you say your name again? I think we might have missed it.
Christine Hartwig, Director of People's Services.
Great. Okay. Anybody else that we missed? And then just our student representative, Lily?
Lily Chisholm, Go In, over.
Great. Is there anybody else that I missed from the roll call that we need to cover?
We have our other student rep, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm going to track them both of them. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Rowan Ackeland, Hebron.
Great. Thank you for being here, both of you. Okay. This time, I'd like to ask, do we all stand and cite the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic which has sent us, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the birth of Jesus Christ.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to open up the meeting for public comments. I'd like to first read a statement, and then we'll turn it over to folks that have participated or joined us to participate. So, "Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro Community Engagement and Attendance at the Board of Education Public Meetings is Welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented." All right. At this point, do we have anybody that's here to present?
We do, Mike. We have somebody here.
Okay, please.
You'll be up there.
Sure, you're welcome. You're welcome to do it from there.
Okay. My name is Ryan Hoysington. I'm from Andover. I have two daughters in high school, and I just kind of felt like letting it out a little bit. So bear with me. I felt it was very important to voice, to be a voice for the voiceless, meaning our children. It has become nearly impossible to sit back and watch as our youth are needlessly forced to continue to mask up and follow these illogical rules and regulations, but we have plenty of data and statistics to support the return to normalcy. Facts speak for themselves. Since about July 2020, we have known that thankfully, our, those 18 and under have virtually zero mortality rate. We now know that healthy children birthed at 18 have statistically similar severe outcomes to RSV and the seasonal flu. According to CT.gov data, the risk of death to somebody that's 0 to 19 is roughly .000047, making it lower than the seasonal flu. In the same vein, we pressure our kids to help protect the community and also the vulnerable. But since the COVID shots have been out for over a year, especially for those in high-risk categories, that is no longer their responsibility. Sadly, we have taught our youth to be afraid and fearful, all while causing far more harm than good with these overreaching health policies. Doctors and therapists around the globe have openly recognized now the collateral damage caused by COVID restrictions in our children are far more dangerous than the disease itself. Depression, anxiety, drug use, and suicide are skyrocketing. Emotional, physical, and social well-being has been stunted. Kids are shaming one another more than ever, bullying over COVID masks and vaccines. As adults and parents, we are responsible for this. It has become maddening to watch and needs to end. To be quite frank, it says, "We have lost the opportunity to teach. There is an important lesson to be learned. Our healthcare system has failed us. We should be helping young people understand that the responsibility for your own personal health and choices in regards to exercise and nutrition are the keys to positive health outcomes. Obesity, heart disease, diabetes, and mental health play a much more significant and serious role in our lives moving forward. It is time to eliminate COVID case counters, mask mandates, and so much focus on the virus. Kids eat lunch unmasked, hang out on the weekends unmasked, but for some reason, we continue this awkward, optical game. It's shameful to see young people with face coverings during sports, in class, or anywhere on school grounds. The data speaks for itself. With that said, the average COVID respiratory droplet is 0.06 to 0.14 microns, and the average surgical mask only prevents microns sized 1 to 10. Also, the average gap between each of our kids' masks on a daily basis is about 1/10 of an inch, which translates to 2,500-micron-sized gap, thus supporting that. There have been no changes in case counts nationwide, masked or unmasked. Please open your eyes and get back to allowing our children to enjoy some sense of normalcy. I realize this is a polarizing topic, and not everybody sees eye to eye. It is imperative that we take actions sooner than later. Parents and children should be making their own choices moving forward. We are one of roughly only 12 states who mandates such policies anymore. Please, can we move on? Let the kids enjoy sports, after-school activities, proms, and all the rest of it. Stop taking away or modifying the simple things that give the youth wonderful memories and experience that will last a lifetime. Thank you."
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that came to speak today? Is there anybody online that joined us to speak? Okay, I'm going to assume that we are finished with public comments. Thank you. Is there any need to add or delete any particular agenda items? All right, nothing heard. I'm going to go ahead and move on to student representative reports.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you again. Nothing really is going on, but I'll just catch you up on some of the sort of aspects of this time of year for the senior class and for the entire school. So, sports is looking pretty good for the winter. The girls' basketball team is 9-0, and the boys' basketball team is, I think, 7-0, hopefully about to be 8, because I believe they're playing. And indoor track is doing really well. We moved out to conference meets now, and only a few people are attending, but Liam Calhoun, you probably know him. He has about like six school records now, so that's pretty cool. Wrestling is also succeeding very well. Not really sure how the scoring works, but I know they're doing good. And a lot of people are committing to colleges now, which is really exciting. Their whole future is sort of shaping up. And with that, the application process is pretty much over for seniors. A lot of the deadlines were in early to mid-January, except for like the rolling admission schools. And now, the last day of Semester 1 is tomorrow. So with Semester 2 rolling around, seniors are sort of easing back when it comes to effort. So, because for those of you who don't know, class rank and GPA is solidified after first semester, so that sort of decreases incentive to work hard. And I think everyone's really enjoying their time back at school. And the main thing people are just concerned about is everyone wants to know when graduation is. And I see we have that on the agenda, so I'll be glad to report to some of my friends who went out. Thank you so much.
Okay, so I wanted to talk a little bit about like the, where we've progressed with COVID regarding like in Ram, in particular throughout the community. First of all, I think that, you know, when you look a few weeks like back and like back from a month's time, we weren't in the exact, we weren't in a good situation, and we weren't in a situation that we wanted to be in with all of the COVID cases. Like I think it got to like, up to 30 at some point, and then it's, they started increasing. But now, we're finding that, you know, we do have like smaller amounts each day, and then it is decreasing from the numbers previously. Like, I know that Dr. Cerusie reported no new cases at some point, so I thought that that was, I thought that that was a good step forward. And I just wanted to say that I think that the community itself in Ram is doing a good job making sure that, you know, the, I feel like the majority understand that in order to like slow down the spread like throughout the, like, school in general, the students are like playing their roles, and they're playing their parts good. And I think that the administration is also doing a good job, like, you know, enforcing, like, you know, mask-wearing and like social distancing so that, like, you know, it can keep kids like in school, because nobody wants to be in that situation where, you know, kids are out of school for a long period of time and having trouble managing their workload and stuff at that, to that point. So I, and I just think that it's important to acknowledge that I feel like everybody is doing their part and making sure that COVID cases do get lower.
That's it.
That's great. Thank you very much. Okay. For the Board of Ed Chair Report. So, a couple of things that I'd just like to add to the meeting. First, I wanted to thank the students for their effort in doing what they can to try and make things work. It's not simple for everybody. Not everybody agrees with all of the requirements, but it's challenging. But you've all risen to the occasion, and you're making it work. Like the reports all told us, life is moving on. Sports is happening, and we're doing really well to boot. College applications are being submitted, and people are committing. Seniors are becoming lazy on the first day of Semester 2, which is a good sign. You know, all those things indicate that we're headed in a good direction with the student body, and I appreciate everybody's effort in that vein. Same thing for the staff. You know, it's not simple to make that, all of these things work. Covering different classes, organizing to make sure that there's enough supervision and faculty available to teach the different classes as we go through the challenges of people being out. Really appreciate all of your efforts. I know it's not simple, and you're going above and beyond. Same thing for the school nurse. I think a special thank you for all the efforts in trying to communicate and coordinate the mitigation efforts. It's really a daily fight, and I truly appreciate everything that she, that is being done there. And then that also goes for the administration, supporting everybody in that effort and trying to make sure that throughout all this, that the best effort to put our best foot forward and make things work is really appreciated. And then the last thing, I'll just say to fellow Board of Education Subcommittee members, as the meetings kick forward and we start to, you start to add extra hours dedicated towards trying to make all the different Subcommittee topics work, I truly appreciate everything you're doing, and thanks for making that extra time. That being said, the report of the Superintendent?
Great, thank you, Mike. And I can assure everybody that Mike Rowan and I did not collaborate on our comments this evening, but I need to do likewise and throw out a huge amount of thanks to the entire Ram community. I think that, you know, we're not all on the same page for all of the separate issues, but I think everyone agrees that students need to be in school, and we need to provide a school experience that is as normal as can possibly be, and one that includes dances, one that includes athletics, one that includes all of the club activities that, you know, so many students really get so much out of. And I really still want to specifically thank our families. Our parents have done a spectacular job of communicating with our nurses, with keeping us up to speed on, you know, where their own children are in regards to how they're feeling, and if they're not feeling well, they're keeping them home. Our students have done an absolutely spectacular job of coming back after the break. And it's hard to imagine how weird it was coming back after the winter break and having as many as 170 students out in, at the high school and at the middle school, and get as many as 60 kids out on the day. That's a huge number of students out. And I'm sure both Lily and Rowan, you've probably experienced classes that were a fraction of, you know, the size that you typically see. Really happy to report that today, we had 16 students out at the middle school and 36 students out at the high school, which is a very normal, typical number. So I think we've really done a great job of kind of getting back to as normal as we can be. Certainly, our teachers, I think, have done a remarkable job of, we didn't know what we were coming back to, you know? And quite frankly, as educators, you know, we talked to other districts, and there were a lot of districts that were wondering if they were going to be able to remain open on a particular day or if they were going to be open for the full week coming back and, you know, what the increased cases might do. And our teachers just did a spectacular job of coming in and not just making sure that they were delivering the instruction our students deserve and need, but they were making sure that they worked with all those students that weren't here, that were at home still, making sure that their students didn't fall behind. And certainly, our, the rest of our staff, our nurses, our paraprofessionals, our bus drivers, our custodians, you know, did a really fantastic job of working behind the scenes, making sure that the teachers and the students could do what they needed to do while they were here. And certainly, it's the administrators that kind of make it all come together and send those positive messages out. So, you know, I really stand back in awe of the Ram community and the piece and the part that everyone has played in it. And certainly, as a Board of Ed, I think you guys should be very proud of what the community does. And I know the community is incredibly grateful for your support and, you know, all that you do on their behalf as well. So, I'm reflecting the thanks. So, thank you guys.
All right. Great. Okay, so we'll move on to item 8, the Consent to the Agenda. So the minutes of previous meeting have been shared. If there's no discussion or any concerns, is there a motion to accept the meetings? The meeting minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes. Mike Sharon?
Mike Sharon?
I have seconded that motion. Thank you for your advice.
Okay. All in favor? Do we need to do a roll call, Scott, or can we do a?
Probably do a roll call, Mike, just because we do have some, we do have, well, it's just you and Sue, am I correct? Better remote? I think we can do a hand call here, and then you and Sue do a voice call. I think that'd be fine.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any? Thanks, any guests? Okay, great. Okay. Next item, old business. So, this old business discussion and possible action regarding a letter to the Connecticut Department of Health. You can see the enclosure. So at our last meeting, we had made a, made the decision to develop a letter and forward it to the Connecticut Department of Public Health in our Department of Health in regard to the masking differences regarding students who are vaccinated versus unvaccinated. Shortly after the meeting, I want to say even the next day, the, those, those guidelines were retracted and changed to eliminate essentially, I think, the crux of what our intent of our letter was. And as I communicated to the different board members, the idea that maybe we, you know, the circumstances, there was some feedback to say, well, you know, we, maybe we still want to send the letter just from the perspective of, well, we don't like the decision-making that went into this and the lack of, you know, maybe incorporating feedback from the different towns and administrations and things of that nature. But there was also some feedback from other members that said, hey, you know, we only have one voice to use and so much ammunition, for lack of a better word, as far as, you know, being able to get our points across and for having, when we do speak up, for it to actually matter. And so I thought they were both very relevant points, and what I had asked at that point was that we could table this letter, given that the restrictions that were kind of at the core of it, well, the action had already been taken, so that we could, as a group, talk about it and then maybe make a decision about whether or not we want to proceed with some sort of a letter, or if we wanted to decide at this point, maybe we would table that and not, and not do so. So I think at this point, what I'd really like is just to ask, you know, the board members for any comment or feedback on that, thoughts about, you know, what you believe our next right steps are. Go ahead, Eric.
I don't think we need the letter.
Okay.
He was, he said, just to repeat, to make sure I heard it correctly, he said, "We don't need the letter." He thinks we don't need the letter?
That's correct.
Yes, I think that's correct.
Okay.
Sue, did you have any thoughts on it?
I second that. I don't think we need it at this time, but I'm definitely ready to circle back if anything changes.
Okay. Any of the other members? Gabriel, Mike?
I would say that I was disappointed at first. I think that one of our primary responsibilities is to defend our students. And the discrimination that was part of the policy that was, what was employed by the, the state BOE, the state Board of Health, I thought was unfair. I think that even their explanation lacked in the true meaning behind what our feelings were. But at the same time, I also recognize that in the coming weeks and months, there's going to be the desire for us to probably take a similar position on other matters. And I recognize the value of reserving our position for future opportunity. So I, my tone has changed. I'm at this, I'm okay with not issuing the letter at this time.
Okay. Mary, or Joe, or Lori, any thoughts?
I agree. This is Joe. I agree that we should table this letter and save our voice for stuff down the, down the line that's going to come up.
Okay.
Gabe Marks, I agree with Mike and Joe. I think that we ought to save our, like Joe said, save our voice for other issues that could come up in the near future.
Right. Okay. Lori or Mary?
Yeah. I sort of feel like the way the current letter is written, it's a moot point at this point, and it would have to be entirely changed to be more of a advocacy perspective of, in the future, when you make decisions, think of X, Y, or Z. And I'm not really sure the Department of Public Health wants to receive such.
It'd probably be less effective, right?
Yeah. And I agree. I think there might be something that comes up in the near term. That is a definite piece that we want to have our voice on, so I concur.
Okay. Well, I guess at this point, then I would ask, and that, we make a motion to not develop and send a letter to the Connecticut Department of Public Health, contradicting what we had agreed to in the last meeting.
So moved.
Okay. Thank you. That is our second.
I'll second Gabe Marks.
Great, thank you. And we'll do a roll call vote real quick. Uh, Lori?
Sorry, yes.
Judy? Michael Sharon?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Mike Morris, I vote yes. All right. Thank you. Okay. New business. So Scott, you want to take over for distribution of the budget and the discussion?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mike. So what I'm about to do is fill up your time for the next five or six weeks. This will be the first of what will be, you know, a number of budget meetings. Really, what my goal tonight is, is to just give you the most general outlines for the actual proposed budget that each of you have. And board members that aren't with us, you have digital copies of this, and we'll mail the physical copies home to you tomorrow. And in the binder, you've got the proposed budget, and then you have the breakout by object and program code, so you can have a more detailed look. And Mike and Penny, we have more copies over here. Could you grab those and distribute it if anyone would like? It's right between the risers, in that blue box. And then I also have a slide presentation that everybody has a copy of as well. But that's what I'll be walking you through this evening to help you get a better handle on the larger document itself in terms of what's in it, what are some of the key driving factors for the budget, what the steps are moving forward over the next few weeks, and what our role of working together will be as we craft what will eventually be the Board of Ed budget. Right now, it's still my proposed budget to you. And then once, you know, you have had a chance to review it and modify it, it will then become your budget. But we'll talk about those dates as we go through it. So Eric, could you run the presentation? Okay. Let me bring the first slide. Thank you. And some of this, you've seen at least a couple of times of it in my December presentation. Some of these slides are identical to what you've already seen. But I think it's important just to put into context that as we develop the proposed budget for you, we're not making it out of whole cloth. We're making sure that what we're putting together supports the mission, the vision, and goals. So, we begin with a strategic plan, and there's a copy of the strategic plan on that first slide. Our mission, our vision, our theory of action. I know, I think I've mentioned it once or twice in the past, but next year is the scheduled year to begin the process to review and revise the plan, which is perfect timing with the onset of the new superintendent. So, but be assured that as you, as we go through the numbers, you sometimes lose track of the fact that, you know, these numbers, they're there to support our students and our staff, and making sure that, you know, the school works as best as it can, and we are looking at those. The next slide, Eric. You know, the commitments that the district has made, developing fiscally efficient and accountable budgets to maximize resources. I think you're going to see a lot of examples of that in this particular budget. Providing welcoming, accepting, well-meaning, clean, accessible, and safe facility in school community. And you're going to see a lot of focus on that area as well. Offering a globally competitive world-class education for all students. That certainly continues to be the overriding goal of any budgets we produce. Hiring, training, and retaining high-quality professional staff, and engaging the community through active outreach and ongoing communication. So all of those are, hopefully, you'll see evidence of each of those as we go through the budget. The strategic plan has five goals. All students will have access to an actively engaged and a variety of learning opportunities where they experience growth and develop skills, confidence, and dispositions to be successful in college and career. And I'm sure many folks are hoping that one of those options won't be remote learning, that we can do that all while we're here. And so that is, continues to be the goal. Goal two, develop professional staff to promote positive school climate. Goal three, develop budgets that address the declining enrollment of the district and are fiscally responsible and responsive to the needs of the school, towns, and state. Develop and implement strategies to enhance and further develop culture of safety, acceptance, pride, and support with students, families, staff, and community members, and enhance our facilities in order to support innovative and fully accessible teaching, learning, and extracurricular opportunities. And again, I hope you'll see evidence of all of that as we go through the budget. The next slide is the timeline. And I know we have an agenda item a little later on that might tweak. And I know we have a, an agenda item a little later on that, that might tweak some of these, but this is pretty much the timeline that we've been working on as, as long as, as I can remember. The top is the January 24th, that's where we are tonight, presenting the administrative budget proposal. Next Monday, we're scheduled to have the department heads, our special ed, pupil personnel, technology, facility and athletics. Those are the, the largest programs within the budget. And so each of those directors will be presenting their budget in more detail than I'll be presenting tonight. Because again, that's where most of the, the funds that you're going to ultimately be deciding on are, are focused in. The next two budget workshops, we, in the past, have structured them a little differently. So we always had the department coordinators attending one of the budget meetings. In the past, though, the department coordinators did fairly elaborate presentations of their departments and their budgets. Part of the reason is that you don't get to see the department coordinators all that often, and it's a nice chance to bring everyone up to speed on what are the goals of each of the departments, where's the money, you know, going, what are they, what's, what's the emphasis, how does it support their goals? What we found though, is that doing all of that during the budget season meant that you had much less time to talk and discuss the budget. And instead, we're just kind of sitting and listening to people telling you about things. So the way we've, we've kind of modified over the last couple of years is that department coordinators will be presenting a very short overview, maybe two, three slides. And then they'll be available to answer any questions. So it's, it's more discussion and give and take than it is simply presenting. I have a, a date in there, February 28th, as a proposed budget, budget, uh, public forum for the budget to invite the public, members of the public to. And again, that's going to depend on where we are at that point. I say propose because you may still be in the process of building the budget and may not feel ready. Or you may be at a point where you really want public input and so it fits well. So that's, some of these dates we'll decide on as we move through. April 4th is, is, is set in stone and that is a public budget hearing and a special, special Board of Ed meeting to set the budget number. So you just need to make sure that between tonight and April 4th, you're at a point where you're comfortable with adopting the budget. So that becomes the board budget. And April 4th is a critical date because you need to have accepted or, or produced a budget in time for the referendum in May. So April 4th is a drop dead date that you need to approve that. And then May 3rd is the budget referendum. Each of the three towns will be voting on the, on both the operating budget for RAM and then separately, the capital budget for RAM. I included two additional dates. The Marble Board of Finance and the Hebron Board of Finance have both reached out and asking for a presentation on where the budget is at that, that given time. So February 16th, the Marble Board of Finance has asked us to present where we are in the budget process there. And likewise, the Hebron Board of Finance on March 8th. I don't have a date yet for Andover, but as soon as I do, I'll, I'll include that. So give a sense of, of where we're going and where it's set out for us. Briefly, the, the budget development process, I think we reviewed this in December as well. Really starts with the principals, the directors, department coordinators beginning in October. And so what you're seeing now in January is the culmination of all of the work and discussion that we've focused on beginning in October to ensure that we, we present to you what we believe is a reasonable budget that fulfills all of the education needs for our students and provides all the materials that we need with, with, with being a responsible budget at the end of the day. And then, okay, so now I'll actually start getting into meat of what you'll see in the, in the book. Enrollment projections are critical to each of our budgets in that, as, you know, I think all of you know, the long-term enrollment projection for RAM is for decreasing enrollment. And we've seen decreasing enrollments there. And you'll notice there are a couple of charts in the book that outline historical enrollment and then they project into the future what enrollment is going to look like. Looking at this year, we're, we anticipate, well, we anticipate by 2026, 2027, we'll have 161 fewer students than what we have right now. And again, a lot can happen in the next five years, but nonetheless, the projection is that there'd be a consistent decline. Looking ahead to next year, it's actually a one year of a very slight decrease. And I think that decrease is actually offset a little bit. So the anticipation is, is that we have five fewer students at the middle school at the beginning of next year, 21 fewer students at the high school. I have a caveat there in bullet number four, that we are seeing a consistent shift in students who are leaving us to attend voag schools, magnet schools and tech schools, returning to RAM. So from the first day of this school year, we've had 13 students so far who have returned to us at the high school level from those, you know, choice programs. So I think if we're looking at 21 fewer high school students next year, in reality, I think it's going to be less than that. So I, I don't see next year as one of those years where there are significant opportunities to reduce staff. As you look down the road in projections, you know, when you're losing 50, 100 students, then, then there are going to have to be some serious discussions along those lines. I don't think we're there this year. Next slide. So there are some proposed increases. And some of these, quite frankly, the, the first four bullets, we have been funding through the ESER grants. So the grants that we got via COVID. These are important enough that we believe that we need to carry on funding for some of the things that we've been doing over the last couple of years. The point for PE health teacher, and I'm going to come back to this in a little bit because there's another position down a couple of pages from here that's going to have kind of impact this. We, the, the state of Connecticut increased the graduation requirements for students. So beginning in 2023, students have to acquire one additional full credit for graduation. In addition, they need to acquire additional elective credits and they need to have additional credits in health and PE. And what we discovered is that our students were really, and, and for, for that reason alone, but also during the pandemic, we found that students tended to be fairly interested in wellness courses, courses that were outside of the box of, you know, their traditional courses. So we did see a significant spike in enrollment in those courses and we, which we continue to see. And so I think as much to make sure that our students can meet those additional graduation requirements, we felt it was, we feel it's important to maintain that, that additional point four. The academic labs at the middle and the high school, these really are, are, are there specifically to support students that are still struggling a bit coming back from, from the pandemic and whether it was from being remote or just from having such a disjointed, you know, year, whether it be this year, last year, the year before. Now, if you think about it, we have students in the building that have never, like our sophomores and freshmen, that have never experienced a normal year of high school. And so, you know, we feel that those academic labs, which are essentially allow teachers to work with smaller groups of students, they're not courses. They're really like a study hall that allows teachers to provide more individualized and directive assistance. Challenges, when you pull teachers out of what their typical duties would be, which is study halls, to provide an additional or a greater number of smaller group academic labs to provide that support, you need to make up on the backend, the study halls that you lost. And so we have two study hall monitors that basically are not teachers, they're non-certified staff that, that there's to provide study halls and, and help us there so that we can provide the additional support to students. So the last bullet there, the three fair professionals are requested through the special ed program and those are, are student-specific. So they are there to provide support to specific students. So those weren't necessarily grant-funded programs. Those are programs that the department determines that are necessary in order to provide the programming for students with IEPs and specialized instruction needs. The, in terms of, of kind of moving away from the specific academic and providing welcoming, accepting, maintaining, accessible and safe facility. Some of you may remember that we probably overly optimistic at the time, but this time last year, we reduced a, the nurses administrative assistant at the high school. It's a part-time position, a little over halftime. And we did so because we, we, under normal circumstances, we haven't needed it. And we thought our LPN was going to fill in that gap. Well, what we thought and what we were hit with, two totally different things. And as you can imagine, the nurse's office has probably been hurt more so in terms of the increased demands than almost any other part of the district. And we found that our LPN really was being drawn and being pulled between the two schools much more than we anticipated and what was needed. And so therefore, this year, we covered the cost of the nurse's administrative assistant at the high school through one of the grants. We anticipate we probably need it for at least one more year. And I'm going to stop making predictions about what things are going to look like related to healthy COVID, but you know, at, at, at least one more year, we anticipate that that's going to be something that's, that's still going to be there. The middle school has a team leader for each of their teams, whereas, you know, the district has our department coordinators, which are department-specific, social studies, English. The team leaders really work with the entire, you know, team of teachers, including English, all studies math and science teachers. The one group that didn't have a, a team leader at the middle school was our school counseling team. And we really feel that particularly now, we find out how critical it is to make sure that our school counseling team is, has the time and the leadership necessary to stay on top of the needs of our students, both academic and social emotional. So we feel that that's a, an important piece to, to be included. The next slide looks at savings that were suggested. The first one, I know the board is, has received some feedback on the first position. This is the career in technical education, CTE teacher. Specifically, this was devoted to the family, the early childhood education courses. And just maybe to, to give you a little background on that. When we moved into this building in 2003, one of the benefits and one of the long-range plans was to provide a preschool program. One, because the, the towns needed additional preschool programming and due to our partnership with AEM, we were the perfect spot for it. And I think each of the schools have, like Ellen, I know Hebron has them and, you know, so there are other preschool programs in the district, but so we started with our preschool program. And that allowed us to, to expand our academic programming and we were able to add early childhood to our CTE program that allowed us to essentially kind of, our students could use the preschool as, as a lab and a workshop to, you know, to, to hone their skills and enhance their knowledge. When, when we did that, we were out of enrollment of about 1,200 students. You know, we're, we're about 800 now. So we, you know, we had 400 additional students in the building. One of the challenges that we've had with our family and consumer science-related programming, so foods would have been example. I don't know if any of you guys took foods, but that was a very popular course. We have both a commercial kitchen and a kind of just a group of typical kitchens. So, you know, we had a commercial foods program and then we had a regular, you know, kind of foods program that for, for those not necessarily interested in restaurant work. And then we had the early childhood program. What we discovered is that there really are no more training programs for family and consumer science. So people aren't coming out of college without certification anymore. And when our foods teacher retired, we simply weren't able to find anybody with a certification. And unfortunately, with, with the way certification works, the state one won't allow you to hire somebody that doesn't have the proper certification. If you somehow did hire somebody without the proper certification, they're not eligible for teacher retirement and you create all sorts of, of messes. And so you don't have a lot of flexibility for problem solving in those cases. So we, we found that we had to eliminate the foods program at that point. We had a teacher that continued, one teacher now. So we had two, one to talk only foods and then we had one that taught foods and early childhood. As that teacher that remained edged towards retirement, they ended up reducing their course loads and only teaching point four, which is essentially two courses a year in early childhood. When they retired, we struggled mightily to find anybody who was certified. We were able to find one individual, but you know, they found that there were other opportunities that they wished to proceed, or pursue. So we have not been running a family consumer science program this year because we just simply could not find anybody with a proper certification. And to keep it in the, as you take programs out of your program of studies and then you try to put them back in, you create other possibly unanticipated problems. So if we were to say, you know what, we're, we're going to do whatever we can and we're going to make sure we get this, this program, as our enrollment edges down, you run the risk of adding a program back in, but then taking students from other areas, in which case you may not be able to run another program which is as dear to their heart, you know, to some students as early childhood was. So it really put us in a conundrum of a program we would love more than anything to continue. It was a really well-regarded and, you know, well-enrolled program and we had the, we have the preschool here to help support it. But because, again, because of the fact that we simply don't have the applicants to fill it and we're concerned that should we fill it, you know, hold off and fill it later on, we may inadvertently find that we're pulling kids away from other programs and then having to cut other teachers and it creates some challenges down that road. So so the, the reason why I kind of said it a couple of slides ago, if you remember the point four for the wellness for PE and health. So what we're proposing here is that we essentially, we're not adding or, you know, overall, you're not going to see any overall negative or plus to teaching positions. It's a flat budget request because we're proposing reducing CTE by point four and increasing PE and health by point four. So it's kind of a wash. Allows us to meet and address the request of students in the area of PE and health and, and we already have, you know, we're able to distribute the students that would have taken the early childhood. We do have quite an emphasis in psychology in our social studies department. So we do have other psychology venues that students can take advantage of. It's unfortunate though, that early childhood is not a course that could be taught in the social studies department. You have to have the family consumer science certification to teach that specific course. This isn't a teaching position, but we have budgeted this year a district services technician. This is a half-time IT support physician. Have not been able to fill. I've not been able to fill this position either. IT support staff are in high demand and short supply. We have found that we've been able to meet the needs of our students and our staff in IT. And so we don't believe that we need this position anymore. So we're not replacing it with anything. We feel that we, our current staff is able to meet our IT needs. The third bullet has, has no impact whatsoever on the budget. But I felt it was important to at least make everyone aware of it. Last year, we reduced the English position because enrollment allowed us to do that, and it made sense. With COVID hitting us and realizing that students, particularly with reading and writing was a tough area, we used grant funds to continue to support that program. So it didn't cost the district anything, but it allowed us to keep the position so that we could teach our, keep our reading and writing courses at lower enrollments to provide more directed assistance, you know, to our students. The grant is, has run its course, and we don't, we believe that, being where we are now, that we don't need that position. So we're not adding it back in. It's listed as a negative FTE, but it doesn't show up in the budget because it was grant-funded. And the next slide really, you know, just gives you a sense of where we've been over the last, since 2018 in terms of reducing FTEs. And I think Ram, you know, I often hear from folks, you know, you should be cutting more teachers, and you should be, as enrollment decreases. And I guess this slide, in some cases, says, yeah, we don't disagree with that. I think we're very measured and thoughtful about how we do it. But you can see that in 2015, which was a significant drop in enrollment, we had 11.1 teachers. And then each year since, we've cut, you know, 3.2, 1.5, and 2 last year. I have no recommendations to reduce staff anymore at this point because of the minimal decrease. But, so we do, I want to make sure that folks know that we're not just trying to keep things the way they are, to keep things the way they are. We really have been very thoughtful, I think, and measured that move it forward. In terms of some of the specific areas that I think have some of the biggest impacts on the budget, one is technology. Scott Putson will be with us next week and be happy and able to answer questions probably in more depth than I may be able to. But you'll notice here, there are a number of software packages that we're adding, much of it to support our technology infrastructure. Jamf is a web-based centralized control for our Apple products. We have a firewall add-on. Schoology helps teachers and students to manage coursework and assignments. So it's kind of a, certainly a teaching aid there. And Google Enterprise provides us with enhanced resources for our Google universe. We, when you look at the full budget book, you're going to see a table with lease packages. And one of the, well, a goal that the board has had and the district has had for quite a few years has been to kind of find that sweet spot of funding technology so that we're not increasing it one year and then increasing it the next and having an even bigger increase the following year. And the goal was to, you know, hit a $60,000 threshold to adequately provide refreshed laptops and the technology that basically makes us run. This year puts us at that point where we want to be, but it means that we're going from a funding leased amount of $40,000 last year to $60,000 this year. So it does bump it up. But then we don't have any increases moving forward beyond. It stays at that flat $6,000 rate. Some of the bigger expenses coming out of that are the seventh and 10th grade Chromebooks will need to be replaced at $124,000. And we're beginning the process of changing out the smart boards, which you can see in the back of the room there. You can see the projector on top. Those were all installed in 2003. And many of them are either not working or they're.
Completely obsolete.
Yeah, they're very much obsolete. So we're in the process of training those out to interactive voice. And next one, in special education. I'm going to be talking in a few slides later about some of the savings in special ed. But, you know, we are seeing some increased magnet school tuition, VoAAG tuition that wasn't originally planned for. As you can imagine, when a student moves into the district or are in a program, or we find that they need an additional program that provides services beyond what we can, we can't always predict when those students are going to arrive or what their needs might be. So, you know, until they're enrolled here, we don't really know where they may end up. In terms of private tuition and professional services, we have three students who are currently attending out-of-district programs who'll be moving into more expensive programs. We have an incoming seventh grader who already attends an out-of-district program. And three students that are currently in Ram, and, but they will then be moving into a postgraduate program. So students can remain with us until their 22nd birthday. So even when they finish year at Ram, they move on to transition programs. And then there's a slight increase in assessment supplies and some of the software packages. Okay, and facilities, well. If you, you have lent even half an ear to the news, you know that prices are going up all over the place. And this is a stark, I think, portrait of where some of the increases in the budget are coming from. We do have to replace a portable refrigeration unit. Those also came with the new, with the building when it was new in 2003, and they're failing as well. So there's a replacement there. We have to do a software program update for HVAC repair and maintenance. It's about $12,000. The Eversource electronic delivery fee is projected to be an increase of $95,000. So there's an example right there of increasing costs. We have some equipment, a washer and dryer in the middle school PE department, some of the acid cabinets in the high school science department, a new soundboard in the auditorium, and AED enclosures for our athletic fields for a proposal of about $10,000. We have an increase in natural gas supplies. And we're proposing adding a remote access door to the English wing. For those of you who can imagine kind of coming in the main entrance for the high school and walking under the overhang, there's a door kind of halfway through that goes into the English wing. It's one of the few outside doors that doesn't have a key fob. And we have a lot of classes that go, you know, that use outside. They certainly in the last few years have been using that entrance area for holding their classes. And so, you know, whenever you have a door that gets used for safety purposes, you want to make sure that you avoid anyone tempted to, or the stone, keep it open or do anything else. And so, you know, when it's getting used, it's safest to put a fob there so that teachers can bring their classes inside now.
Can I ask a quick question? Are these numbers, like in addition to the typical electric budget, typical maintenance budget? Or is this what the proposed budget for those line items is going to be?
That's a great question.
Those numbers are incorporated into the budget already, and they're what's driving the cost up?
But they're not the, just the change cost. They're the actual budgetary items. Yes, right, 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 right. And the next, so the next slide, really, and I think this is, this is kind of where ultimately the big question is, so what, what am I proposing? Am I proposing an increase or a decrease? And you can see here in this budget overview, this breaks out our, basically a budget into the five or six major categories. So certainly, the biggest category is salaries. And our salaries are anticipated to go up 7.8% this year. If you remember, when we negotiated our last few contracts, we knew that Ram paid significantly lower than surrounding areas. And so the negotiations committee board, we were able to coordinate a year that had higher increases than others into this upcoming year, knowing that we were trying to coordinate it with a year that looked like it was going to have, be a little easier to absorb some of those increases. The benefits also go up likewise. Purchased services, you're going to see a decrease there. So any of those red numbers are areas of decrease. I'm going to be going through each one of these in just a minute. Our tuition in-state, where you see a fairly significant decrease in that. Our supplies have increased, but then property and some of those other areas have decreased as well. So let's go through each one of those. I'll do those briefly, just so you can get a sense of, where are the increases in the budget and where are the decreases? Certainly, salaries are probably the largest source of increase. For purchased services, we have a $70,000 decrease. And that's because we're budgeting less for pupil transportation is our morning and afternoon bus routes. Our special ed, our VoAAG, and our athletic transportation. We've decreased those numbers. We feel that we can decrease in those areas. Printing and binding has been decreased significantly. Our electric pair and maintenance supply has been decreased. And up to this year, we budgeted for three custodial temps because we had so many custodians coming and going, particularly with some getting sick and, you know, with COVID. We've eliminated those three temps from the budget and instead added one custodial position to our existing custodians. So that allows us to save significant amount of money, but also we felt be a more responsible way of keeping, supporting the staffing for our custodians. The tuition in-state and out-of-state, here again, you know, the special education department did a lot of fine detail work and were able to decrease our tuition fairly significantly. And these are based on real student services. This is not something we're just projecting, but in looking at how we invest the needs of our kids, this allows us to decrease that. In terms of supplies, we are seeing increases in electricity, in diesel fuel. Career and technical education, I'm not picking on one department, but this is a department that does metals. This is a department that does a lot of heavy supply-based work. And so as they are rushing back to normal, there's a, you know, an increase in supplies likewise. In terms of property, and this property includes the equipment, the stuff that we buy. And we've eliminated the types of furniture that we might have typically purchased, equipment for our IT department, equipment for art, science, PE. And it doesn't mean that we're not buying anything. It may be that last year, we were able to get, you know, purchases, but we just don't feel like, you know, we need it this year. So we're able to experience some savings in that area. And the next one is, is the big one. Under other, this includes the principal and interest payments for the school building. So our, we have a decrease of 1.4 million in principal and interest payments. So this line item decreases accordingly. Yep.
If, if that bond is being fulfilled, why isn't it minus 100%?
Because it's still, it, it's not paid off. There's still, you still have about five years left of it. So it went from.
2.8 to 1.4.
Yeah, exactly. Yes, right, right. And it's going to stay flat for another year. And then it'll drop to 600,000. And stay flat, and then go away. And that's.
And it's all the same bond?
Yes, yes, yep. And that's, that's all laid out in here. Yep, yep. So to bring it all together, what does this look like as far as, as the overall operating budget? So the overall operating budget is a decrease of 1.46%. So we're coming in with a decrease of 454,000 for a 1.46% decrease. However, it doesn't stop there because you'll see that long list of anticipated revenues. So this is where we have funds coming into the district. And if you calculate the projected increase in funding, we're presenting a operating budget. This is just the operating budget. An operating budget change of negative 1.7%. So coming in at $518,926, less than what we have budgeted for this year. And I think it's important to note that, you know, there may be an assumption that, well, your bonding is going down by 1.4 million. So why isn't your decrease here going down by 1.4 million? It's going down by 1.7% because we have the salary increases. We have the supply increases. And so there are increases that are, are negating some of that decrease that we might like to see. But, you know, I think, again, this is a reasonable balance. The next slide is our capital improvement budget. And I'm going to now kind of shift gears a little bit. So the operating budget that we just talked about really just talks about running the schools, keeping buses running, keeping students in the classrooms educated, and making it all work. The capital improvement budget looks at the big capital items, replacing boilers, replacing refrigerators, replacing flooring, replacing roofs, you know, all those things that you need to do to keep your structures and your fields and grounds up and running. This current year, we're working with a capital budget of $299,500. I'm proposing a hefty increase. So we are looking at $522,000, which is an increase of $222,000. And that's not random. The facilities subcommittee that was, that had worked over the last, you know, really kind of similar makeup for quite a while, the goal had always been to get to about a $500,000 capital budget that, again, very much like our tech leases, wouldn't have to wane and increase year by year. So you could have just a stable funding without increases from year to year. This obviously brings it, brings us to that, that figure. I think I'm, I'm safe in proposing this because of the savings in the operating budget. You know, this is pretty scary to look at and say, well, you've got a 74% increase versus a 1.7% decrease in the other budget. Like, this is huge. But keep in mind that this is tiny compared to the $29 million operating budget. And so when you look at, when you put them all together, overall, capital and operating put together is still, comes in at a negative. It comes in at negative 0.98%. So let me talk a little more about capital. So, the capital, the board has a lot of options here. I'm, my proposal is one way to go, but there are a lot of options the board has. And I think that. And I think that capital is going to be a topic that we're going to have to spend, you know, some really quality time on to get it right. So I'm proposing that, well, I'm not proposing. There are three pots of money related to capital that the board is going to have some decisions to make regarding. So the first one is my proposed for the capital budget, 522,000. And that capital budget that I'm proposing, the 522,000, you're going to see in the budget book. So I lay out exactly what it is that we're projecting. Flooring in the kitchen, replacing refrigerators, some concrete work. So the facility subcommittee reviewed our proposals. And, you know, I think we all agreed that, you know, these are all worthy projects that really need to get done. You also have, as we speak, $229,000 sitting in our capital improvement plan and our capital nonrecurring account. So these are, this is money that's either left over from projects that were completed, coming in under budget. So there was still money left over that stayed, that remains in capital. And it also includes projects that were put on hold. So the drainage for the competition field, drainage repair for the baseball field. We put those on hold as we pursued the turf coaching. So we've got $229,000 that's existing in capital now that you, as a board, have some decisions to make. And certainly, the facility subcommittee will be looking carefully at it and making some recommendations too. The third pot of money is nebulous right now. I can't make any promises to you what that amount's going to be. But what I can tell you is that any surplus from the 2021 budget year will need to be audited. And that audit usually finishes up in about March. State law allows a board, a regional board of ed to use an amount equal to 2% of that year's budget to earmark for capital budgets. So you have the potential of up to $622,000 also may be able to use. Now, you may not, the surplus may not equate to 622,000. It may be less than that. It might be more than that. If it's more than that, let's say it's a million dollars. You don't get to keep the million dollars. You can only keep 622,000 of it in capital for capital projects. The rest of it would go back to the towns. Okay? So there's three pots that you have to play with. If you look at the next slide...
I think you explained it, but I missed it. The difference between the capital improvement plan balance and the capital nonrecurring balance?
So the capital nonrecurring, even, correct me if I'm missing anything, but the capital nonrecurring includes projects that have been completed and monies that have been audited from other projects that gets carried over from year to year. The capital improvement plan is from the last year's, or the previous year's, of 2021. No, no, 19 to 20 year.
Yeah, 19 to 20.
That was, and that's where the projects that were put on hold exist.
And it all carries over?
It all carries over. Yes, exactly.
So there's two different pots of money. Your capital nonrecurring is prior to the past year. It's always been a 1% rollover. So this year, the year that finished, not the year that we're at, the year that finished, we get to carry 2% over for capital nonrecurring projects. And that's where that pot of money was originally funded from. The capital improvement is based on the budget process and factors.
Okay, so you could have the 2% over each year and use it in the future as you see fit.
Exactly. Right, right, right. And that's a perfect segue. So here, there's some of the options that you have. For what I proposed, the 522,000 plus the existing capital, the 200,000 that's available to you. You know, you can fund my prioritized capital projects with capital budget and use existing funds to fund some of the capital budgets in order to reduce the proposed capital budget. So if the board feels that $522,000 is just too much in one year, you could use some of the capital nonrecurring budget to pay for some of those projects and reduce that overall increase in the capital budget. So that would be one option you'd have, to play with both pots of money and reduce my proposed. The only caution I would throw is that if you reduce it, then as your capital needs continue to pile up, you may find that you're increasing it more each year as opposed to, you know, getting to a flat point. Second bullet, you could fund additional capital projects that I've not included in my proposal. And the facility subcommittee looked at almost a million or over a million dollars with the projects. And the ones that we have here are the ones that kind of we prioritize. But there are others that may be just as worthy. And then use that money to fund necessary field, athletic field repairs and improvements. So those athletic field challenges haven't gone away. Obviously, just the solution that we put in place is going to have to be different than what we had hoped it would be. The next piece is you've got that audited surplus from last year. And again, this, this could be as high as $622,000. With that surplus money, if you're, if it comes up into that range, I think that we'd have enough to take care of all of the necessary athletic field repairs. And so, you know, my, my suggestion would be to fund the capital this year, which doesn't include any athletic works, but look at that surplus and possibly any of the capital nonrecurring to cover. I'm not saying go out and buy turf, but I'm suggesting do the drainage, replace the track. But I think we could do most of that necessary work with those funds.
Scott, can I just ask a question about the surplus? I thought we only could keep 1% of the surplus and the rest had to go back.
They changed that, Sue, so that beginning this year, it was increased to 2%.
Okay.
You're correct that when, when the legislature kind of created the ability for school districts to carry surpluses, they allowed districts, school districts, just regular school districts to carry 2%, but limited regional districts to 1%. They fixed that imbalance with this past session. So we can now carry over 2%.
Okay, thank you. Good to know.
The other, so the next budget too is that, you know, I think one of the conversations we will need to have is looking ahead and possibly creating some long-term saving items. Because we know that we're going to have some hefty projects like roof replacement, replacing the boilers, replacing the chillers. Those are, those are million dollar projects. And those are, those are expensive projects. You're not going to be able to save enough each year to get that. So there will be some bonding, but you may be able to save enough to decrease the bonding in some way. So that's a piece. And I can't not also suggest that you could also return it to the towns, which is what we did last year. Last year, when we were, everyone was uncertain of where we were going economically, we had a lot of lengthy conversations with the three towns. And rather than holding on to the, what last year would have been the 1%, we gave it all back. We gave up towards 800,000 back to the towns. With the conversation that next year, the hope is that we'd be able to use some, you know, use that money towards the district needs. So I think the towns would be at least open to those continued discussions. But I can't discount, Sue brought up a really good point. You know, it, it used to be that we could carry over 1%. You know, it doesn't lock you in to using that money for your capital projects. That's what you can use it for, but you can return it to the towns as well.
You can also do partial, you can keep some and give some back, right?
Yep, yep, yep. So I know I'm throwing a lot of different scenarios out there. But I do believe that with a reasonable capital budget this year, with the money that's currently in the capital fund and with the anticipation of the surplus funds, that we could take care of a lot of, you know, requirements, whether they be athletic fields, whether they be the necessary repairs within the building. So I'm optimistic that although it's a huge challenge, we're in a nice spot right now with some great opportunities. And this, this is my last slide. This just gives you an overview of where we've been over the last six years in terms of increases and decreases. You know, I think that 2.78, 2.89 probably are pretty representative where most districts come in on any given typical year. You know, we have been able to come in with some, a couple of years a little lower than that, the 1.76 and the 1.67. And then certainly, we've been able to come in with some negative years. And again, the overall proposal for the budget I'm presenting tonight is, comes in at a negative 0.98. So I know I just threw a lot of, what really is a general overview. I think most of your questions are probably going to come, either hopefully be answered in this book, but also come out of reviewing the book. So I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you have right now. Because we're, you know, our schedule is to meet at least for the next four to five weeks. What I would ask is if you could forward any questions to Eve and I by Wednesday, that would give us at least, you know, a couple of days to make sure we have all the information you may need. So please feel free to email myself with any questions that you have as you go through this, and we'll make sure that we have answers for you. But certainly, we'll be happy to answer questions during the meetings as well. But anything that you think might need some preparation, keep giving any questions to us by Wednesday. Wednesday is each week, that would be great. So I'm happy to entertain any questions. I think you could probably take the screen down so we can see the folks on the screen. Thanks, Eric.
Scott, as an example, there was flooring in the kitchen. It's a cafeteria. Then there could be equipment in the kitchen, which is under administrative. So what, what tips something over from administrative to capital?
So in theory, a capital project is anything above a $10,000 threshold. When it comes to the food service portion, we tend to use the operating budget to support the food service portion as opposed to throwing everything into capital. It's just, this was a need that we know has to happen where capital is still debated, I guess, or needs to be ironed out between. And the director of facilities felt that this really had to be done and knows that he puts it into operating. It looks that.
Okay, okay. And there was 124K for laptops. How is, what's, what's the logic there?
So that's the leasing. And so Scott can probably answer this a little bit better. So every, so every, so every third year, students get new Provo to recite so that everyone has the one-on-one technology in place. And if we're going to require that of our students, we have to do what we tend to support the students having the newer technologies. So I believe it's seniors get new ones?
No, I think it's the seventh graders and the 10th graders this year.
Yeah, and so, and so what's going on there? Is that, that's not considered capital because it's a lease? Okay, got you. Got it, thank you.
Any other questions for Scott at this point?
Great. Well, thank you for your attention. I'm sorry for rattling on for so long. There's a lot of information there.
Takes a lot of time to do that, yeah.
And again, open up to any questions. I know there's a lot, you know, we live it. So we assume that some things might be more obvious than they are. So feel free to reach out to us for any questions.
Great, okay. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. Do you also want to carry over in talking about setting the 2022 roll of the high school graduation date?
Sure. And I'm just sorry that Lily's not here. Although based upon what Lily said, I'm thinking maybe we should set the graduation date till Friday. So historically, school districts were required to wait until April 1st to set the graduation date. And what that means by setting the graduation date, it means that a board of education can designate a date that seniors will graduate. And should there be any further snow days or disruptions, the seniors don't have to make up those days. Everybody else does. Seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th graders do have to continue to come to school. And the state, you know, rightly so, decided that, well, April 1st is a good time because what's the chance of having snow days after April? But it is close enough to the end of the school year where it makes sense. Well, and that worked first for a while, but graduations have become more involved. And they involve a greater reliance on rented chairs and rented stages and rented equipment, rented sound systems. Some districts rent facilities. You know, they might hold their graduation at the Bushnell or other theater-type areas. And what we found is, well, then you had also the added burden of our project graduation committee, which schedules the after-graduation party, which typically involves a area where you book. You have to make reservations. And as graduation dates moved, it, you know, each, each snow day put us into a panic. You know, are we going to be able to still rent the stage on that day? Are we going to be able to rent the hall? You know, we did rent halls to do that. And certainly, for project graduation, we've actually had years where they've had to change venues because whatever venue they were originally hoping for wasn't available on our new graduation date. So in response to that, in 2019, the state allows the board of educations to set the graduation date for seniors at any time during the school year. Some school districts, Glastonbury, for example, sets their senior graduation date at their first board meeting in September. I mean, Glastonbury is a huge district. Setting a graduation is a, I'm sure, monumental task. And they have a lot of people thinking about traveling. And so, you know, for them, I think it makes sense. I think for us, it's probably a little too early to, because we still have, you know, some snow days that you can anticipate happening. So I would argue that right now, in January, with two snow days under our belt, is probably as good a time as any to set graduation. And what, what we'd have to do, the only option you have is to set graduation on the 180th day from the beginning of the school year. And right now, that's June 15th. So you don't have any more flexibility other than that. You can't decide, well, I'd rather it be on the 16th, the 17th, or the 13th, or the 7th. You can choose the 180th day from when we started school because we've had two snow days. That puts us at the 15th. What that would allow us to do if we set graduation tonight, it allows families to make travel preparations, you know, fly people around the country. It allows us to lock in our stage rental, our chair rental, our sound system rental. What else do we rent? We must rent something else. We seem to rent a million things for graduation. And then it allows our project graduation to nail down the, you know, the venue for project graduation. You know, the risk we take is that our seniors may miss out on a few days of school.
Sure, they'll be distraught.
So I think it's.
Right now is the 15th, the two snow days, right?
Correct, right, right.
And that's a half day for everybody?
Well, they, yes, the last couple of days are half days. Yeah, they're half days, well.
It wouldn't be if we could do it.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, they would have to be, actually.
Yeah, we'd have to, see. So this is the year that we're not doing midterms and finals. Typically, when we do mid, so next year, we'll have midterms and finals again. The last four days of the first semester and the last four days of the second semester are half days because you have the two-hour exams. And plus, having midterm and final schedule allowed us the time necessary for rehearsal for graduation. Last year, although we didn't have midterms and finals, we had half days on those last couple of days so that our seniors could practice graduation. You'll see that there are half days on this year's schedule as well. If in fact, we set graduation at the 15th tonight and we have X number of snow days, I imagine that Dr. Briskell will request that, you know, could we keep those two days as half days so that our seniors could practice, you know, for the graduations? And I would agree that that would be a reasonable request.
So that 13th wouldn't be a half day anymore, but the 14th and 15th would be?
Correct.
So is there any discussion that we need to have? Is there anybody, any input on this?
Well, I'll make a motion, I guess. I'll make a motion to set the high school graduation date to June 15th.
Great, seconded by, I'm sorry, is that Lori?
Yep, Lori, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that being said, let's roll call. So the.
Could I just ask, forgive my ignorance, are graduations typically done in the middle of the week?
Ours, ours are always done on the last day of school. So, so they are, they're more than likely, yes, yes. Having said that, there are some districts that like always do the graduation on Saturdays, or they always do it on, you know, a Friday night, whatever it might be. And we've never, we've always done on the last day of school.
Okay, no one's gonna get back.
Oh, no.
Eric makes me think of a question. So if we do have more snow days, does that mean everybody except the seniors would come on the 16th and 17th?
Correct.
And do we, do we foresee for families that have siblings, that have family that might be coming in, that that might be in attendance? Issue or concern, I guess?
I would hope not. I mean, I would hope that they'd see the value of having their kids continue to.
Okay.
I think the seniors have the lock on senioritis. So I'm hoping that our un-classed.
Definitely.
Express that in sentences as well.
All right, so just to reiterate, Sue Stolpe made a proposal that we set the RAM graduation date for June 15th, which is a Wednesday, 2022. And Lori seconded it. We'll go through a roll call vote. Lori?
Yes.
Mike Jerome?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Judy, I'm not sure if she joined us. Jessica, I'm not sure, oh yeah, Jessica. Carrie? And then Mike Morris, I'll vote yes. So the yeses have it, and we'll set the June 15th as the date for graduation.
Great, thank you very much.
All right. The next item on the new business agenda was a discussion and possible action on modifying the board of education regular meeting schedule. So, look, I want to be, I'll throw it out there, full disclosure. I asked Scott to add this to the agenda for two reasons. First, we kind of adopted a schedule that's been ongoing and kind of carry over from previous boards. And so having not had this group actually ever really discuss it, I don't think, in detail, I thought it was at least worth that discussion. The second part of that full disclosure is Monday couldn't be the worst night for Mike Morris on the planet to have a meeting. Now, that being said, I don't want to ask anybody to expect that I, you know, am expecting that anybody would change or that we would change this, you know, purely because it's not, you know, the best circumstance for me. But I thought, as I was trying to work my schedule around it, I thought it was at least worth the discussion to find out if this was an issue for other people on the board, and if there was something that we wanted to do different about it, then at least to have discussion. So that being said, I guess I'd just throw it out there, you know, is this a good night that is to meet the best for everybody in order to get the most participation? Or is there, are there better nights? I mean, what's the temperature of the board on that discussion? Sue?
So I'd also, while we're discussing this as well, August 15th was one of the dates also on the schedule. And I must have missed the meeting where we discussed this and proved this. But August 15th is really dead smack in the middle of August. Folks still may be on vacation. So I always like considering moving that to the following week so it's not right in the middle of vacation week. Our vacation time, summer vacation time. So that's just another input. And as to your request on the Monday, I have another board meeting on Thursdays. So if, if we were going to change, I wouldn't, I would be okay with entertaining possibly Tuesday. But I would hate to have back-to-back-to-back meetings like Wednesday, Thursday. But I could consider Tuesdays. I haven't, I don't believe I have much on Tuesdays right now.
Okay. Anybody else thoughts on this?
I have a super packed meeting schedule. For me, moving it from Monday would mean changing around my soccer season. That's fall and spring. And it could impact my ability to get here on time and most likely not be in person. But if that, if, you know, if that ends up being what people would prefer, then I can see that, I have to understand that that would be hard for me to work around. And then April through, through June would be really difficult for me to work, work around that, but.
That's fair, anybody else? For or against, I guess, is the question, is it Monday's good, not, not good?
Mondays and Tuesdays are good for me. If that makes the decision any easier for the balance of the board.
Okay, that's helpful. Eric or Gabriel, you guys?
I think Monday or Tuesday is fine with me.
Okay.
Yeah, Monday and Tuesdays are fine.
Okay, what about you, Mary, or, or Joe, or?
I'm pretty open. I would, obviously, I'd say I wouldn't do Fridays, but Mondays or Tuesdays would be fine with me.
I'm flexible for Monday or Tuesday as well.
Great, great, okay. Look, I guess what I'd like to do then, maybe I would propose kind of a hybrid. I don't want to, I, you know, I think everybody kind of knew the Monday nights were going to be the, kind of the standard Monday nights for the regular RAM board meetings. But maybe what if we were to take these subsequent budget workshops that we right now have loaded up for every Monday between now and the, give me Scott, but I think it seems like 10 years from now. And what if we were to have just the board meetings continue to meet on the Monday nights, but then move the budget workshops to the Tuesday nights, which would give us an opportunity, it maybe isn't as disruptive to you, Lori, but maybe gives us a little bit of a break on Monday nights for the extra meetings.
Yeah, that, I mean, that works for me. And, and again, if, you know, I don't want to not be the flexible, the flexible one.
No, I think you're being flexible.
Until April, so Tuesdays are, are good until, until then for me. But yeah, I think that's a great idea to bring it up a little bit.
All right, so is there any other thoughts or input on that? Otherwise, I was gonna, I'm gonna make a motion.
How about you, Scott?
I, I can tell you, Mike, that I polled our coordinators, and Tuesday was the night they could do it. I think Wednesdays, Thursdays, they worked, been harder. So I think Tuesday, I think everyone that needs to be there will be able to attend. So that shouldn't be a problem for us.
Just to, just to make sure everybody knows, I'm not the least considerate person on the planet. I did actually ask Scott that question. Before I ever even asked to add it to the agenda, it wasn't going to work for the administration, then it really didn't matter one way or the other. I did ask that question, but thank you for bringing that up, I do appreciate that. All right, so if that's the case, then what I would ask is, they proposed that we, oh, actually, before we do any proposals, maybe let's discuss Sue's point about August 15th because I happen to agree, I, I think it's the worst time and, like, you know, those summer two months are, it's tough to put something in the middle of it and expect that we're going to get a lot of participation. If it's not, can, if it's not terribly inconvenient for anybody, I certainly would support pushing that, that meeting back to the, to the next week.
20 seconds.
20 seconds would probably be just fine, I don't see any problems with that. We'll have new teacher orientation that week, but that doesn't start until, I think, Tuesday. And our staff will be in on the 30th. Wait, am I looking at the wrong year?
Yeah, there's still another one.
Yeah, right, right, right. So yeah, so that, I think that works.
Okay.
One second, yeah.
All right, so if that's the case, then what I would like to do is make a proposal, or make a motion that we continue to have the standard scheduled board of education monthly meetings on the Monday night, but then move all of the additional budget workshop or any subsequent additional meetings that might support other effort to Tuesday nights. And we'll leave it up to Scott to, you know, propose those dates as necessary. And then also, one step further, to move the last meeting, that meeting in August, back to the following Monday, which is August 22nd.
Second.
All right. That being the case, let's go ahead and vote on that real quick. Lori?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
And Michael?
Yes.
And then just in case they joined us, Carrie? Jessica? Or Judy? All right, and then I vote yes as well. All right, so that motion carries. Thank you, everybody, I appreciate your flexibility and, and trying to work out the best circumstance because at the end of the day, I'd love to make sure that we have as many people that can participate as possible. So thank you very much for that flexibility.
Great, so then, Mike, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, February 1st. That'll be our first budget workshop.
Yep. And maybe if you could, Scott, just update that slide and maybe pass it around so we all have that updated schedule?
Absolutely, we'll, we'll update, we'll get plenty of messages around. And I'm, I'm working under the assumption that our budget workshops will continue at 6:30 and they'll still be hybrid so that anyone who wants to be present can be, and anyone who wants to participate remotely will be able to as well.
Scott, one step further, are those going to be recorded that we can access them to? Because I'm sure, especially with the workshops, that if certain people can't participate, they'll still want to be able to watch the presentations.
Yep, absolutely, we'll record every, any board meetings we hold, we'll record.
I have a quick comment to make. Can someone check what day of the week February 15th is?
February 15th is the Tuesday.
Under committee reports, it just says the policy committee next meeting is scheduled for February 15th.
Right.
So I just want to figure out what we're going to do with that.
What I'll have to do is I'll look at the other, the subcommittee meetings and then reach out to the head of each of the committees, and we'll, we'll have to reschedule some of those meetings, yeah. So I think that probably may be the only one, but yeah, we'll reschedule that one.
Great, thank you, Gabriel, appreciate you catching that.
Yeah, and, and just, Scott, just so you know, sometimes we just end up just canceling them as well if they're not needed because we're so busy during Monday season. Just keep that in mind as well.
Yep.
Amen.
Yeah, thank you.
Got a lot of love on that.
You did. Okay, that being said, why don't we move on to the financials, Scott?
All right, so in your packet under 10.4A, that is where the expenditure revenue report has a December 31st, 2021. There is a projection that favorable provision of $134,281. As for revenue, the state is statutorily required to provide the district's first payment of 75% for excess cost entitlement. So that's for our high-cost specialist students. So we're planning on receiving that funding on February 28th of 2022. So it won't be in time for the next board meeting, but hopefully, yeah, what we're anticipating. We've been lucky and been doing good so far. Expenditures, the departments are spending down their funds and plans. There have been challenges due to inflation and/or supply chain issues. So transfers are requested and completed, and the board will be taking action on those this evening also. There's no significant changes for the capital improvement fund for the non-recurring with federal loan refinancing. We're still awaiting any word on the official closure or audit by the state of Connecticut's DOT department. And people services continue to have their first letters. As any other thing that's happened to the individual educational programs where IET meetings take place, and they take place daily, it seems like, and very often throughout the day. So are there any questions that I can help answer based on the information that I presented?
It's a big change, is it?
Yeah, we're doing, yeah, we're doing really well. All right, okay, that was the expenditure report. On 10.4B, we have this. And basically, again, that's just an overview of the funds that our students and or the schools have set by the clubs and other entities. The balance matches what they have, so we don't have any concerns there. There are no openings to report. Everybody is in good shape there also. So if there are any questions on that, I'll be happy to answer any notes. None. 10.4C, which is the food service report. This begins through December 31st, 2021. You'll see that unfortunately, we had a bit of a slowdown again, so we had a loss of about, well, under $10,000 for the month of December. I'm hoping and still being hopeful that as schools continue and the students continue to see this where this is, and the students get a little excited about the food, that we will still, we will finish their first even points and hopefully, try to make some of our wealth. There is still rumors being had that both the federal government and the state government are trying to work out a way for this. What we're currently in is called a seamless summer operation, so we do not charge the students for meals, their actual meal. The concern is now that they're in two years of not charging families for food, they're afraid that the balances, that we'll not be able to collect money or that there'll be more need. And they don't want the shaming of somebody not being able to pay a bill or, or not having the money in the food line to count and, and being shamed. Not that that's happened here, but that's a big concern for the state of Connecticut and making sure that students get that appropriately without having to worry about anything to like about their status. So hopefully, the federal government will be able to get together and work something out, and we won't have to worry about charging for future meals. But are there any questions that I should answer based on that information?
I'll just ask, I mean, I don't think, since it's not really a problem yet, it's probably not worth spending the time in this meeting discussing it. But maybe if it, if we do find that they don't cover it and that we do have to go back to those, to that payment and collection circumstance, maybe digging into if there's any other best practices to avoid exactly all the things that you said are the problems.
Yep. We got it all that for you.
Okay, great.
Alright, and 10.4D, these are the budget appropriation transfers that have happened as per, um, the board policies, which doesn't actually happen quarterly, but thereabouts. So this board that was elected was the last time, so this is always where, where we come around to the board. These are all the transactions. So we have my memo that has the coverage sheet that basically explains each one of the transactions. And, um, behind that is the transaction itself in the system from the system print set, so you can see actually what the transaction entails. The listing of these 18 transfers total that took $399,503.37. Some of these items basically when it comes to personnel transfers, there are times that we have staff that may have resigned, if it was on a medical leave. And this is available funds. We go back to something that's called an unallocated personnel account. So that's money that's available in, um, flipped everything over. But, um, so if you go back to the expenditure report of 10.4A, you'll see that the first attempt that's on page one of the COE Personnel Program Expenditure Report is the line that I'm speaking of, that's the unallocated personnel. So that's where if there's available funds and salary money, that's where we put the available. So that's what some of those transfers are, so there's not, uh, these money available to take and cover shortage areas in other areas if the need is, is there. But having stated that, there are 18 transfers that will require, uh, a motion by a board member in a second so that we can, um, discuss them and, um, have the board, um, have action on them, hopefully positively to pass them, but, um, I haven't come across them not being moved through. But do you want to answer, have me answer any questions before the motion is made? Or do you guys want to move it forward and have the discussion?
I feel like we should probably open it up for discussion first, if there is any.
Okay. Any questions?
As, as I recall, roughly three months ago, there was and, and it was, um, I don't remember the exact amount, but it was somewhere in the ballpark of what we're looking at here. So that would lead me to believe that, um, the level of transfers is not out of the ordinary. That, you know, it's a big budget, a few hundred grand is not a lot of money. And, uh, it's a routine to, uh, to move things around a little bit to, to make sure that everything gets fulfilled in the areas where there's surplus money, that's where you go get it. Got you. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
How, how often do these transfers typically occur? I mean, we should expect to see them in the future, I'm sure, but.
Yeah, you will. So, um, so July, August and September, those transfers that happen, you will see that at an October board meeting. We're in January and we're handling October, November and December transactions. And then in March, you're going to see January, February, and in May, you're going to see March and April. Now, you're going to notice that there's no month of June. So I bring all June transfers or year-end transfers, as I like to refer to them to the August meeting.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion points for this? Alright. That being the case, uh, can I ask somebody to make a motion to, um, accept the, uh, 18 transfers required by action by the Board of Education? As proposed for, I guess, the total of $399,503.37? Okay, Eric makes the motion. Eric will make the motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Mary will second.
Okay, Mary, thank you. Let's go through and do a quick roll vote. Start with, uh, Stu?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Uh, Gabriel?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Uh, Lori?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Judy? Jessica? Carrie? And, uh, Mike Morris, I vote yes. Yes is have it, so that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Uh, let's see, with that being the case, committee reports. So, um, at this point, I'm turning over, uh, facilities.
Uh, Facilities does not, has not met since the last combined meeting. Uh, they're, um, can't remember the date of that actual meeting. Was it right there? See, I'm going to take off my.
Don't do that.
So, and at that time, we discussed, uh, the capital budget in advance of tonight's proposal from Superintendent Leslie. So no actions were taken at that time. I don't think that we have anything additional to, to add.
Okay. Uh, Finance and Audit, Compliance and Insurance?
I think that was the joint meeting with Facilities, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else you need to add to that, Lori?
I don't have anything else. No, thank you.
Yep, okay. Uh, Negotiations, no, they haven't met. Policy? Their next meeting, the next meeting is on the 15th. I don't think there's anything that, uh, probably, uh, comes out of that. Um, Program and Communication, Mary?
Yeah, we had a great meeting. Um, our only agenda item was basically looking at modifications to the 22-23 midterm and final exams. Chris Mader did a great presentation, um, sharing information from the school-based committee. The committee, um, consisted of members from really most departments. Their two main objectives were, um, to determine the future of midterm exams and final exams at RAM. And also, they also want to look at, um, if their exams were going to continue, um, how, you know, what was going to happen with the grading value and they wanted it to be like a consistent, um, policy. And, um, they did some research and we were impressed. They went around and they basically, um, contacted colleges about what their practices were. They also, um, talked to other local high schools to understand what they were doing. And then they also gathered teacher perspective to, you know, to kind of round everything out. And what they found was that most colleges are giving exams. However, they did find it was, um, department-dependent. Um, mostly the STEM content areas were giving them more traditional exams. In other departments, it was more like, um, kind of applicable assessments that would be practical in that, um, domain. Like presentations, projects, things like that. They found that local high schools, some have stayed with exams and others, and some of them have actually reduced their weight in their overall grade. Um, and some have moved to different types of assessments. When they surveyed the RAM staff, they found that 85% supported exams continuing in some form, and the majority also supported reducing the weight of the exams at RAM. So basically, um, what they were talking about for the 22-23 academic year was making the weight of tho, these exams about 10% of the final grade. They felt that was more equitable and that it could still demonstrate some proficiency in the course. So, it was a really good discussion. And the, what they're looking at for possible, um, alternative to the traditional like paper exam was, um, you know, like if you were in a, um, English course, maybe a Socratic seminar or student presentation. If it was a communications course, perhaps a speech or analysis of a speech, computer science, creating programs. It was really more content-based, um, showing, demonstrating their proficiency in a, you know, in applicable way to that field. So it was really a lot of, it was a good meeting, didn't you think? And you took wonderful minutes. Thank you. So it was good. I tried to make that, I tried to make that fast so that we have a lot on the agenda.
Mike, I, I have a question just to bring up. Is that okay? Was Mike frozen? I'll chat. I think, I think he's frozen, but
Oh, no.
On the communication piece of it all, while, um, you know, we are starting to prepare the budget and we have all those meetings set up for budget work stops and the public budget. Is, is all that information going to be communicated through the website, social media, emailing parents? In the past, we've had budget flyers too that, uh, we could share with our town and community members. Is that all taking place, Scott? I'm sure you have that well under control. I just want to ensure that you do.
Absolutely, Sue. So we'll, we'll be posting it, um, everything on the website tomorrow morning under the budget. You know, right now, there's only one item. It's my presentation from December, but all of these items will get posted. And then I'll reach out to, um, the Boards of Finance and the selectmen from each of the three towns and send them copies as well tomorrow. So get all that information out.
Yeah, and it just would be great if on like social media, we could let the communities know, you know, when we're having those budget workshops.
Absolutely, yep.
And, and then that, you know, that budget forum for the community members to join if they wanted to ask questions. I think that's just important to get it out there. I know there's a lot of emails coming out from the school, uh, which I appreciate, very informative. So this will just be another one added to the parents' plates.
Sure, yep. No, we'll make sure we get it out though. Thank you.
Thanks, I apologize. I dropped off there for a second. Okay, I think we left off, uh, normally we would have Judy talk as far as the facilitation for, uh, Eastcon and CAPE. I don't think Judy's heard us yet. So the only thing I would say is I just wanted to take this moment to, uh, opportunity to thank Sue Stolfi uh, and you, Scott, for coordinating with Nick Caruso to have him come do the, uh, legal briefing that we got, uh, and kind of the, you know, kind of CAPE best practices for board, new Board of Education members. I thought it was excellent. It was, uh, it was really well, um, presented. It was detailed. I think it gave us, you know, some real practical advice about how to go about doing this right and well. And, uh, it was also some, you know, kind of strategic type stuff about, uh, kind of rethinking about how we go about, how we approach what we're doing as our job, uh, as, as board members and as a group. So again, it was, I thought it was a great opportunity. If you had, uh, if you were able to participate, that's great. I appreciate that. And if you weren't, I do think we have that also recorded and if, yeah, I, I think it's well worth your time to, to watch it, especially if you're a new board member, to make sure that, uh, you kind of capture all the, the, uh, information that Nick shared with us. Do you think? Oh, Steph, uh, I'll, I'll ask Judy to follow up with everybody and just give, uh, whatever coveries are in the near-term future. Scott, do you have anything on, on any of that? That's a no. Scott, you have anything on CAPE or Eastcon? Do you, are you aware of anything with them?
I, I don't. Nope. No updates from me.
Alright, I'll, so I'll, I'll just ask her to follow up with that. Alright, with that being the case, then, um, I'll, I guess we'll move on to the, uh, public comment. And Scott, do I need to read this again?
Um, no, I don't think so, Mike.
So at this point, I would just ask if there's any other additional public comment?
I have a public comment. I just want to give a shout out to, um, the middle school inquiry team and the counselors, Alicia Gold, the particular is my son's counselor. I just wanted to say that, like, out loud in this meeting. He broke his arm, his dominant arm Thanksgiving weekend and it didn't even occur to me to ask for any kind of assistance in writing. And Alicia contacted me and we got a 504 in place temporarily, but he needed it. And it really helped, you know, and he had expressed concern at home about how am I going to write? How am I going to get exams done on time? And, you know, he's in geometry and there's a lot of, I think they were doing proofs for what seemed like forever and, you know, all the writing with it and, uh, you know, he wasn't distraught over it, but he was concerned and asked me and I was just sort of trying to help him as a left-handed family, trying to navigate with his left hand, but, you know, it wasn't exactly the best scenario. So, uh, I just wanted to, on record, say, say that and Dr. Cersei too. They were wonderful. They reached out to me. They facilitated everything and, um, it was great.
Anybody, uh, either in the room or online that, for public comment? Alright, hearing none. Then I'll move on. Informational items. Scott, anything that we need to cover here?
Um, again, these each month will provide the calendar of events, so you can see what activities are scheduled, both the middle and the high schools and our student discipline, um, statistics. Shouldn't have to answer any questions.
Okay, there's no questions on the informational items, then, uh, I'll just add one, one note I was remiss earlier when we were having the discussion about the, uh, the letter being sent to Public Health. One, one, uh, note of thanks to Mike Sharon. He really jumped on that and very quickly developed a letter that I thought was, uh, you know, up until they changed, uh, all the, uh, the, um, guidelines, uh, was a super quick and very well-thought-out, uh, reaction and, and, uh, anyway, just really appreciate how quickly you got to work on that and how thorough you were on it. Unfortunately, we didn't get to use it, but I, I think it bodes well for our secretary that we have that, uh, that level of response and expertise that we can get out those kind of things as we need. So thank you very much for doing that.
Thanks, Mike.
Um, alright, with that being the case, then I would ask, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Mary?
I'll second. Mike Sharon?
Alright, Michael seconded. And, uh, why don't we do a, just a show of hands and then we'll do a voice, uh, for the people. So all, uh, in favor of adjournment?
Yes.
Okay, and then, uh, online, Sue?
Yes.
Yep, online, Mike as well. Alright, that being the case, then moving. Meeting adjourned.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it tonight.